I'd like to open up the public hearing on school choice. Do we have any takers? Not seeing any. Like to close the hearing on school choice. And we'll open up the regular scheduled meeting of the school committee for January 14th, 2019. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence. Thank you. The listing of matters on the agenda are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair, which may be brought up for discussion at the meeting. Not all items in fact may be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being videotaped for cable. I'd like to make a motion to approve our December 10th, 2018 school committee meeting.
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Dr. Oakley.
First update is, you know, we're headed into the FY20 budget season and just a few dates that I want you all to have for our presentations. So you will receive the first draft of our budget for you to look at at the February meeting, which is before vacation, and then you can take time, look through it, and if you have any questions or anything like that, you can give us a call or wait until the special budget meeting that we're going to have on February 25th at 6:00 PM. And so just note that that's 6, not 6:30. That's the Monday after February vacation. And we'll do a line-by-line look at the budget that we propose, and that will be the time when, you know, we'll discuss whether or not we'll have changes in any fees, any positions or anything like that. So that's why we like to give it to you a couple of weeks ahead of time so that you can be looking at it. So then when we do go line-by-line, you can already have some questions formulated for us. And then we will make any changes that are recommended by the committee and meet at our March meeting, which I think is the 10th or 11th.
The 11th.
The 11th. And that will be to vote, to push the budget to the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee. And the following week, we'll present on Wednesday night, March 20th, at 7:55 PM, and then Thursday night, March 21st, at 7:25 for the Finance Committee. And just those times in the past, the dates haven't changed, but the times have changed based on maybe other departments that can't make it or something that changes. So I'll keep you up to date, but right now, the original schedule that Town Administration Gagny had sent out had that as the times for education. So it would be nice if as many of you as possible can come to help present to the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee. And then once that's done, they'll deliberate, the Board of Selectmen will decide, you know, what our budgets will be. It's usually done by the beginning of May so that they can get the warrants ready and also the book for the town meeting, which is a week earlier this year. It's the first week, the first Monday in June. So I think that's June 3rd. Pretty sure. That's the town meeting this year. Yeah. So it was moved up. Usually the second Monday, they moved it up to the first. And that's the process. Any questions about that? All right. I'm going to jump to the North River Collaborative for a minute. In front of you have the North River Collaborative Annual Report that gets put together by all our collaboratives. Next month, you'll get the Reed's Collaborative Annual Report. So everyone has the annual report that has all their programming, financials, and all that stuff in there. With that, there's also a revision to the North River Collaborative agreement. So every collaborative in the state has to have an agreement that outlines its policies and procedures, and that gets turned into the DESE. There is a change to this year's collaborative agreement because the Board of Directors over the summer voted to add Holbrook to the collaborative. So because of that addition, there are changes to the collaborative agreement. It really is that, the split of things and stuff like that because we've added another town to the collaborative. So by law, we have to get a vote of every school committee in the collaborative to agree to change the agreement, which is basically adding Holbrook to the mix. Does anyone have any questions about that?
Are they, we now, or I should say, is the collaborative North River more or less got all of the surrounding towns?
No. Well, they do have us, yeah.
Mostly this area?
Yeah. East Bridgewater, Bridgewater, Rainham, us, and then it goes Abington, Rockland, Hanover.
Stoughton.
So now Holbrook, Stoughton had added a couple years ago.
Stoughton had lost here, right? Wasn't lost here?
And Rockland. Maybe two years ago.
Two years ago.
Are they going south or they cannot go south?
No, they can, but as of right now, they're not. They're not actually looking for more members. It was just Holbrook. What happened with Holbrook is they were a member of Charms Collaborative, and that had like Canton and Stoughton and a couple of others in that area. I think Avon was up there too. And Charms broke up. They disbanded. So some of those collaborative, of those towns in Charms already belonged to another one, so they just stayed with that one. Holbrook didn't have another one that they belonged to. So where Avon was already in North River, it kind of made sense that Holbrook being right next door applied to become a member of North River.
Is it a problem with having an even number of school districts?
No.
Are they still planning on enlarging their system in the RAS on 28, in the school?
Holbrook?
No. Reed.
Oh, North River?
No, North River. I'm sorry. I'm convinced Reed's.
No, you're talking Reed's, yeah. Reed's is next month.
All right. Next month is Reed's.
Yeah.
Do the vote now or we? So I'd like to make a motion to accept the new agreement with Holbrook added into the North River Collaborative. Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Awesome. We just have to send something to the Director so that they know that it was unanimous vote of West Bridgewater. All right. So being budget time, I also wanted to give an update of the foundation budget reform that you might have heard about. I'm sure, I know that MASC has been sending things out to everyone. And a week ago, Monday, there were a bunch of forums around the state about this budget reform and to get information out to constituents. And it's really an effort by Mass Association of School Committees, Mass Association of School Superintendents, and the Mass Teachers Association of working together to get information out about the budget reform. And the fact that there was a foundation budget reform committee that reviewed what we have now for our Chapter 70 formula, that was put into place in 1993, and they came out with recommendations. So we're really trying to present these recommendations and so that it can move to the legislature and we can try to get this fixed. So I just wanted to give you a little overview of some of the things that were discussed when I went to the forum, and just so you have some basic information about it, because it's really something that I think all parties need to know about and contact their state senators and reps about. So basically, the history, you know a little bit about the fact that this Chapter 70 formula, which is based on the premise of a foundation budget, goes back to 1993, but it didn't, it wasn't really through the legislature that came. It came about through a lawsuit. And that's also another option for this, but we're hoping that we can get things done legislatively and not have to go through the lawsuit. Basically, the foundation budget was put so that everyone had a target of what the adequate minimum spending was or a foundation budget. And it was based on a lot of different things, but it was the wealth of your town and the size, the number of pupils you have and those things. But it set a budget that the state was saying, this is what you need to adequately educate the students in your town. And that was the point, so that there wasn't a disparity. Okay? So it was always about equity. And then the communities are supposed to pay a share of the foundation budget based on their ability to pay, because every, so it wasn't the same for every town. So even if your town is the same size, if your ability to pay is different, then what you were expected to pay would change your foundation budget. Okay? So they would also, they would supplement that foundation budget. So it was set at a certain thing, and it was based on these categories you can see up there. And these are the funding categories. So the formula was done by looking at these areas and how many pupils you have and a few other calculations thrown in. And it, and the formula tells you, so say for example, your foundation budget came out to $10 million, and they're saying that it's going to cost $10 million for such-and-such school to fund adequately their school system. The formula would say, this much should be administration, this percentage instructional leadership, this should be other teaching services, and it's, that's how they get. So they're saying, so the formula recommends certain amounts for each to add up to that 10,000, if it, excuse me, 10 million if it was that. Okay? If you look at the bottom two, the employee benefits and fixed charges and the special ed tuition, not just the special ed tuition, but also in-district special education, those two things have really changed a lot in 26 years. So this formula was put into place in 1993. When you think about health insurance costs since 1993, when you think about special education costs and the number of students with severe disabilities since 1993, there was no way to anticipate those changes in 1993. So what's happened is, these costs have surged, but the formula hasn't changed. So they don't take into account that these things have changed. So health insurance, the foundation budget might give you a certain number that you're supposed to spend on it, but it far exceeds it in this, the current foundation budget allotment by more than 140%. That's how much health insurance has gone up. And most people don't realize it, but health insurance is actually part of our per pupil expenditure. It doesn't come out of the budget we put together, the town pays it, but that's counted as per pupil expenditure. Okay? And it's, the allotment is more than 140%. The reason, one of the reasons for that is because the current formula doesn't factor in the cost for retirement, retiree health insurance. But yet, our town pays our retirees' health insurance. And as a matter of fact, in West Bridgewater, they pay 90-10. So the employee, retired employee pays 10, the town in West Bridgewater pays 90. But that doesn't factor in, so that cost is really high and takes a lot out of the foundation budget. The other thing is the special education. Again, districts spend far more than the current foundation budget for out-of-district placements by more than 59%. The in-district special ed enrollment is less than the actual statewide enrollment in the foundation budget. So the foundation budget is saying that it should be a certain number, but it's less than the statewide average that it's saying. So your foundation is saying, okay, well, if your percentage is, you know, 4%, but now our state average has gone way up, it's, again, using an old formula. So, and one of the things with special education, why, why are there more kids? Why have the costs gone up, especially for out-of-district placements? It's really because of a positive thing, that medical science has really advanced. And a lot of kids that maybe back before 1993 were premature babies, maybe they wouldn't have made it, maybe they weren't able to go to school, whereas now, because of the advancements in medical science, these kids are living and need to be educated, but they might have some more severe disabilities. So we have more kids and we have to educate. So that's great that we have these kids, it's just the formula didn't change, so where's the money to fund the education portion? So we do have more, more needs, more kids with needs. So if you look at this slide, you can see that, this is shows that the health insurance, now this is the whole state, all right? So the whole state, the foundation budget for health insurance and other benefits, about $1.44 billion. But our actual, excuse me, but our actual spending is, the difference is actually $1.44 billion, excuse me. So you can see that the foundation budget is a lot lower than what the state actually pays. Each district that's all together actually pays for health insurance benefits. So it has to get made up somewhere because there's, you don't have the money in the foundation budget. In-district sped teachers, you see how much the foundation allot, but what's actually spent. Over a billion dollars more than what the foundation from this formula, remember, in 1993. And then out-of-district, you can see that's about 159 million difference, but the actual spending is higher. So the foundation budget is saying, this is what you should spend, but because these costs have gotten out of control, we're actually spending more. Well, there's only so much money to go around, so where do you get that money? It comes from your towns. It doesn't come more from the state because the state only gives you so much for the Chapter 70 within the foundation budget. The other thing that happens is, if these two categories in the foundation budget overspend, then what's happening is, some of the categories then would underspend. So look at the third, the third one says regular ed teachers. You can see what the foundation budget says that you should be spending on regular ed teachers, but the actual expenditure is a lot, is 27% lower. Why? Because the money's going into sped costs or healthcare costs. There's a few other categories, the same thing happens. Professional development for teachers, materials and technology, operations and maintenance. And so there are things that because of the high cost of healthcare and the high cost of special education, we're pulling it from other places. So basically, the foundation budget needs to be brought up to date, because the only way to make up the difference is to Ashka Town Farm. All right? So if, if the state's giving you so much of Chapter 70 to go towards that foundation budget, but all these costs are so high and increasing, you have to have the local town make up the difference. If you look at this, this is, they split the state up into quintiles, so there's the lowest 20%, second, middle, fourth, and the highest, and that's by wealth. West Bridgewater actually falls in the second 20th quintile. We're the second lowest based on our wealth within our community. And so you can see that all those communities that fall in with us in the second, the towns are giving more money in order to make these things happen. The average per pupil expenditure in that second 20% is 13 million, and we're actually below that. Ours is 12. So, excuse me, 13,000 per pupil. Ours is actually 12. So there's only so much money, and what happens is, every year, we go for our budget with the town, and we say, we need more money, we need more money, and like, we're giving you so much money. Well, and we're paying more than the foundation budget. So why do you need more? Because the foundation budget is not adequate anymore. And as school committee members, you know, we've gone, we fight with, you know, the finance committee, we fight with the site, and we say, but we need more, and they say, we don't have any more to give, and we're paying enough as it is, because that's what the formula says. But again, the formula is flawed, the formula is old, the formula needs to change. And that's really what this whole thing is about. We need to have our legislators help us and change the formula. So the four models that have come out of the review committee, the first one would take into account health insurance, special ed, and English language learners, because that is also something that's completely changed since 1993 and has a much bigger cost factor. So they would account for those increases within the formula, which would actually increase your foundation budget. And if your foundation budget increases, then your Chapter 70 allocation would increase. Okay? That's one. Model two takes all those three things plus a minimum aid guarantee, which would go up to $50 per pupil guaranteed increase over the prior year. So in other words, depending on how many kids you have enrolled, you'd get an extra $50 per kid on top of that. So it's a little bit, could be a little bit more, depending on how those other factors fall in. Model three takes the health insurance, special ed, ELL, and low income rates, which obviously in most places would increase the foundation. And one of the reasons that this is really important, doesn't make as much difference in a community like West Bridgewater, but in urban communities, especially communities, and I heard the superintendent from Chelsea talk about it, when she was saying that they don't count a lot of their low-income kids because they may be undocumented immigrants. And because they don't count them, she has, I think she said like over 800 kids that she's educating, that she has to educate, but she's not getting the money for it. So this low-income rates would make a big difference, especially for the urban communities. And then model four is the same as three with the addition of that minimum aid guarantee. So what does this mean in dollars? It is a big increase, but you can see, this is the whole state, what the increase in Chapter 70 dollars would be. And this is over a five-year period. If any of these models were to go into play, it would be over a five-year period, and you'd get 20% a year. So then you'd be up to pace by FY '23, 2023. So what does that mean for us? For us, it would be about $356, $357,000 if it was model one and two, over increase in our Chapter 70, and if it were three or four, it would be 400 and, about 480,000. And that, that's an estimate, you know, so it could change, but this would be a phase in over a five-year period. So if you say model three and four, close to 500,000, that would be a, for a small school like us, that's a yearly, that would be a big increase for us. When you think about it, last year, we went and we wanted, we asked for, we usually get maybe $370,000, $380,000 increase, and we got a little bit more last year because we had all those retirements. So if your Chapter 70 increases close to 500,000, that's going to help us out a lot. So it's really important, I think, that we as a committee, you work on it, you talk to people about it, you get people in the communities talking about it, get the information out there, and you talk to your reps, and you talk to your senators, and I think it's perfect that tonight, we just happen to have our senator here, so he couldn't hear this. So now you don't have to call him, because you can just raise your hand and say, I would have called you about this. But, so that's really a lot to do with the foundation budget. And I think it leads in, I wanted to go over it tonight, because now we're going to be talking about all the other things that affect our budget, and we're going to be going to the Selectmen and going to the Finance Committee, trying to get that extra money that the state, you know, isn't giving us, and we're going to be asking for more, and it's a burden on communities. So I wanted to preface it with this, so that we have a better understanding of what's been going on around. And I'm sure, like I said, you have probably gotten emails and stuff from MASC, because they're very much behind this and working on it. Any questions?
Quick question. So clearly, this information is definitely important, because it gives more support now for when we do go into the Finance Committee and with the Selectmen and so forth, to support the need for our budget. But is this something that is voted uniform across the state, whatever model it's decided on?
Well, that's what they're trying-
They wouldn't taper their models on, for example, the urban areas would be model three or four because of that component versus, you know what I mean?
That's not what we're, that's not what's been presented, but once something goes into debate, I'm sure anything can happen. But the urban models, because of the, because of three and four, because of the low income
piece, that did get, they'd net more money anyway. But only if model one and two were voted on, they wouldn't get that?
They wouldn't get the low income, so they'd be a little, they'd be lower-
Yeah.
But they'd still be higher than us, because of the ELL and that, because of the percentage. So no, I mean, what we're fighting for is to pick one of the models and go through, and obviously, we would like three and four.
Right.
You know?
Right.
But it's just a review that come out to change it and to try to increase the foundation budget, really, to make it adequate. But if you put in all those components, the health, the special ed, the ELL, and the low income, that makes it so that everyone gets it proportionate.
Okay.
You know, we're trying to make it more equitable.
Okay.
So obviously, I mean, I think Brockton is, you know, due to, if I looked at it correctly, it's, it was something like 18 million or something different, because, you know, but their budget is huge. And, and that makes sense, because I know, was it last year, I think it was last year, she had to cut $11 million from the budget. She basically cut our entire budget from her budget. You know, so they're really, they are really, so when you say 18, 18 million, you know, so it will increase them, so they're, you know. But I think it's important, because a lot of people in towns think, oh, this is just for the urbans, because they're really pushing it.
Right.
But it really isn't. We do make out with it, we do get, get money from this, but also, there's something bigger, which is, all kids, no matter what your zip code is, deserve a quality education. And so even if we just get a little bit, everyone, everywhere deserves a good education, and if, if they need the funding, then I think we support it anyway. I know it would be easy to say, well, we only get, you know, 300,000, so is that really that much? But it's really the bigger picture that we should really- But it's really the bigger picture, that we should really be supporting education for all kids, because education in our city next door and our other towns just makes it good for the entire community and the entire state. So, I think it's just an important thing to get, to get behind. But still, I think West Bridgewater is in a good position to get what we need to help us out, based on what we usually have for increases.
Thank you, Dr. Oakley.
That it?
Everybody good?
I'm great.
Mr. Michael Azic, Special Education Overview.
Hello. I just wanted to use this time, I think, just to inform the committee kind of what we're doing in the district. Since I've been here last July, I think it's just good for you guys to be informed of kind of the changes that we've made within our programming, updates that we're doing, and trends that we're seeing, and kind of changes to come. So, I love this phrase, this is kind of my best quote I have in my office, it's the most dangerous phrase in the, in the language, is "We've always done it this way." And that's something that I talk to staff all the time, and, and a lot of them will tell me, "But we've always done it this way, Corey, why do we have to change?" And no one really likes change, and that's okay. But change is good, and, and change is what our kids need, as, as we're seeing a different trend of students coming into the district. Two big philosophies that we kind of focus on in the, in the special ed department is kind of inclusion works, and relationships matter. And so, it's building those relationships with colleagues, building those relationships with the community, building those relationships with families, first and foremost. And, and the way that we look at our inclusion model, we've made significant strides, and I'll speak to kind of what we've changed at the lower elementary level, to support the kids that we see moving in from the Spring Street forward. But inclusion is, is, is really, really easy to do poorly, but really hard to do well. And that's something that I've always believed in, that if we put the right supports in place and the right training in place, our teachers will succeed, and ultimately, our kids will get the best benefit. I'm not gonna bore you too much on the laws and regulations, but really, the, the federal special education law is the IDEA, Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. And six major principles, free and appropriate education, appropriate evaluations, IEP, of course, least restrictive environment, parent participation, and procedural safeguards. First one is every kid, no matter the disability, needs and deserves a free and appropriate public education. And that's what the IEP will drive. Secondly, appropriate evaluations, is that districts and IEP teams need to ensure that we have the trained and knowledgeable testers or evaluators to perform evaluations in, in students suspected area of disability. And we have that within the district, but that's something that is part of the team process, and we need to ensure that we're providing those appropriate evaluations. Third, like I said, the IEP is actually what drives that free and appropriate education. Least restrictive environment, as the IEP team, we need to ensure that our district is looking at all possibilities to how to place that student in general education classroom as appropriate, with the right supplementary aids and services, with the right supports. And that's what I think, that's what we're gonna focus on tonight, and that's what we're gonna focus on with the inclusion models. How do we do that with the right, the right way, and how do we do that with kids with varying needs? What's interesting about West Bridgewater compared to the last district I worked at, is that, there's not really a cohort of kids with the same type of need that we're seeing. It's sporadic, it's, some, you know, kids in the fourth grade might have the same need as a kid in the eighth grade. Of course, we can't combine those students in the same program, so it gets really difficult, but I'll continue on as far as how we're making that kind of shift. Parent participation, I'm a firm believer in this, I'm very transparent when it comes to parents, and, and parents deserve the right to have equal participation in the team process for their child. That's, that's first and foremost, that they should be at the table and making those decisions with the team as much as we are. And then procedural safeguards, that's essentially what enforces us to ensure that each child falls under that federal law, and we're providing all of those necessary supports, and what we're doing under the federal law that enforces that. A little bit about the data. Right now, I just ran this data, January 7th, so last Monday. Right now, we have 1,377 students, 147 students in special education. Right now, on a district, we have 18, so we're about 12%. And then, the last part of the slide is the state average. As of 1718, that's the last data that I could get from the state, the state average was at 17.7, and right now, as of January 7th, we're at 10.6, which is great, right? So, what that shows is that we're doing really well on our general education model, to prevent special education referrals. And what that means is that we need to then continue to further what we're doing in general education to support those kids, so we don't get those special education referrals. Because what I say is, when you have, special education is the only game in town, it's the only game in town, right? That's the only option for families. The only thing I'm uncomfortable about this data is the 18 students out of district. I'd like to see around 10%, that would be another two or three kids. We had, we had a meeting last week where we returned a kid to district. So, right now, we're, in the past year, we've returned three students to district, two at the high, middle school, high school, and one at the Howard School. And all three students are doing very, very well. And again, that's another dipstick, to say that what we're doing is, is good, and what we're doing is, is changing, but it's good. And it's working for kids that were in very substantially separate, very specialized programs, coming to now a big building like middle school, high school, and they're doing really well. And, and I say this all the time, but you know, the principals here in front of you, they're the reason why we're able to do this work, is because, you know, they're really, really supportive, besides Mark, but, you know. No, really, they're very supportive, and when we look at students returning to district, it's, it's always a hard conversation to have with principals, right? It's, you know, "We have a little Johnny, and some significant issues, but we want to return him." It's the culture and climate of the building, right? So, I think we work together really well and really collaboratively, to ensure that when that student returns, we have a successful transition to, back to district. So, I think we're doing a really good job with that. All right, next slide, perfect. Two big changes that we've made, and continuing to make, is our co-teaching model, and what that looks like, and looping for the special ed teachers, and then the learning center approaches, what we kind of incorporated over at the Rozell School. What we've had notoriously in West Bridgewater is, we've had one special education teacher associated with the grade level. Instead of associating that, that grade level teacher, well, that special ed teacher to the grade level, they're student aid-based. So, they're following those students for the duration that they're at that respective school. As an example, at the Rozell, who probably undergone the most change, I think, and we have a teacher here, I appreciate you coming, but we have a teacher here who's kind of embraced that, because like I said earlier, the change is hard for everyone, and, and I think this is, is doing right by kids. So, if a kid comes to the Rozell, and they're in the first grade, they have that special education liaison. When they go to the second grade, they get a new special education liaison, and just like when they go to third, they get another one, right? And it's really tough for families to really, because in special education, you really know families on intimate basis, much more than your typical general ed teacher would. And so, this case, we're able to build relationships with our neediest kids and our neediest families that need the most support. And if they can spend two to three years with them, that's great. At the high school, they've had looping notoriously, nine through 12, for I don't know how long you've had it, but it's, you know, and we kind of follow that. And I've had a couple of parents kind of challenge me to see what we can do and look into that within the district. But it makes sense. If a kid goes to Rozell, you know, they should have that special education liaison, be that hub, and be that person for that child, and that number one advocate. So, as a kid transitions to second grade or third grade, they'll still have that person there, not three different liaisons. And then co-teaching, that's another big process, and, and that kind of goes hand in hand with the learning center approach. So, at the Rozell, you know, we had three, like I said earlier, three grade-level special ed teachers slash liaisons. And instead was, we created a very specialized approach, and it's not a program, it's not a substantially separate program, it's a, it's a full, it's an inclusive program, however, it provides a specialized remedial type of service for students, where students are receiving co-treatment, you know, from speech and language pathologists at the same time as special ed teachers, or the OT at the same time as a speech and language pathologist. And what it really enables is a kid to receive really high-quality specialized instruction, without no cost to the district, because we're not hiring additional teachers, we just change around the schedules, we change around the way, what classrooms the teachers are in. So, we have three at the Rozell, one of them specifically is for the learning center, and the other two are doing full inclusion, so they're not doing any pull-out services. We had a, in my opinion, kind of an older-fashioned model of special education pull-out services, and it was, you know, pull a couple of kids out, bring them back to class. There wasn't really that connection between pull-out services and what's happening in the classroom. Now, Keith has been fully supportive, and, and how do we arrange our building-wide schedules to ensure that that teacher receives the appropriate planning time at each grade level? Because there's a lot more that goes into it, a lot more logistics, far beyond my area of expertise. But, you know, how do we provide them with the necessary planning time to meet with the teachers, provide the necessary training and support? And I think we're doing a good job, you know, there's things that we saw, we, we can't predict everything that's gonna happen or go wrong, or possibly need to change. And as we, in the middle of things, within the year, we've seen some change that needs to happen, and Keith has been on it to really kind of, all right, let's change this, let's tweak this. And I think we're doing a good job, I think there's still more work to be done, and, and what's happening at the Rozell, we just gotta transition to how can we do that district-wide, in order to support our kids? Because as you see, we had last year, when I started in September, about 24 kids out of district. We had three return, a couple move out. But if they can return to district, and they're doing well within our programs, that means, again, dipstick, that we're doing good things. So, yep. Look at that. So, specialized training, support, and consultation. So, we've had a couple of changes. So, as you know, Dr. Hanscom had Nadja Riley on board with the staff previously to me getting here, so I can't take credit for her, but she is phenomenal and amazing. However, what we're doing with her is different than what was done before in the past. So, she's providing a lot of specialized consultation with our school psychologists. So, our school psychologists right now in the district, we have three, and we'll go through that in a little bit. And they're really highly specialized, however, we didn't, they were our clinical experts within the district. And I personally felt, if we have kids with varying needs, we need that additional expertise. And so, she meets with them on a regular basis. We have, Wednesday, she's actually walking through all the buildings with myself and the building principals and Dr. Oakley, looking at social-emotional learning as a baseline and what we're doing, and how is she gonna help us drive to another avenue to provide a little bit better social-emotional learning, especially at the early education years. What we're seeing is, is a lot of mental health, and, and I know Dr. Oakley spoke about this last year, at the budget, I think at the town meeting, about how it's an epidemic, and it truly is. It's not an urban issue, it's, it's not a suburban issue, it's, it's everywhere. It doesn't discriminate, it's, it's, it's something that we're seeing even younger and younger every year. Kids coming into Kiddegon with significant illnesses. So, what we can do here with Dr. Riley is that she kind of drives us in what we're doing in programming-wise, and really provides a good clinical support to the teachers. Underneath her is Dr. Barry Plummer. We used to have Dr. Livingston through Bamsy, however, I felt the need to go a different route. This is someone who I've worked with in the past, and he's someone, clinical consultant, however, what he does is he goes to team meetings, he goes to meet with parents, he goes to meet with district colleagues, when, when there could be an issue, when we're looking at changing, or when we're looking at how to best support little Johnny in the classroom. He's someone that will come in, observe, meet with the parents, meet with the staff, and provides really good feedback to us in how to deliver our, the next step, or that we're gonna deliver for, for our kids within the district. If you go down a little bit lower, we have Dr. Lisa Decker, who I met a couple of years ago, who I struck up a really good relationship, and I reached out with her over the, to her over the summer, and she's someone who is the girl nationally-known co-teaching expert. And so, what we've kind of invested in this year is for our teachers to go bimonthly professional development, it's through Skype, because she's doing it from Florida. She's, I believe, out of the University of Central Florida, kind of the director of all special ed programming over there. And she's someone who's highly respected, and she has been doing some really, really good work with our teachers, and it's, all the schools are involved, the Howard School, the Rozell, and, yeah, Howard School and Rozell at the elementary level. Next year, we're gonna focus seven through 12. And she's meeting with general ed teachers and special education teachers. And what's really great about her is the fact that she's very real and very practical. And so, this year, we're doing, you know, elementary-wise, you know, elementary-wide, and then next year, we're gonna go building-based. So, she's gonna meet with building-based teams, because it's really a two, two-to-three-year process to really get our co-teaching and effective co-teaching where we need to be to support our neediest kids. Underneath that, landmark outreach, this is a notorious language-based program, they also have a school in the state of Mass, in Beverly, I believe it is. And that's someone, and that's a, that's a program, they have an outreach center that really focuses on language-based instruction. So, last year during a PD, our middle school teachers, NIAs, went through a professional development training through an outreach worker that came to the middle school, high school, to provide really professional development on students, and how to best educate students with language-based disabilities. And, and I found it helpful, and I think it just gives another insight to what we can do as a district in an inclusive model to support language-based disabilities. Underneath that, we have assistive tech, so she's, Jackie Egan's from North River, she's an assistive tech expert. And I go further into what our inclusion model looks like and what we're doing in inclusion, she's a really key part of that. She's a consultant when it comes to assistive tech, and assistive tech devices, and, and apps, and how to best have kids communicate as a supplementary aid and service within the classroom. Then we go down a little bit, this is kind of what our teachers have gone through the past couple of years, well, last year and a half, specialized reading training slash certification. So, some of our teachers, including our speech pathologists, went through very specific, intensive reading instruction training, and certain reading programs, to best support the kids that we have in front of us. It's okay? Thoughts alone. But, so, what happens is, is there's a number of reading programs out there, but our special ed teachers aren't necessarily reading specialists, but how do we improve their reading support that they're providing within, again, the inclusive model? Behavioral support training, we have three behavior specialists, as you know, district-wide. We have a full-time at the Spring Street School, one full-time at the Rozell, and a .6 at the Howard. Now, I think there's some consistency among them, because we created kind of a behavioral support team. Now, we have an in-district BCBA full-time, she provides a comprehensive kind of overview, and kind of the supervisor to those behavior specialists. And they went through an intensive training last year, they had some PD and some training in some areas, but instead, we kind of took it to the next level, and they went through a very year-long training, registered behavior technicians. So, that's, you know, that's comprehensive training, modules they have to go through, hours they have to do, and then a really, really difficult test at the end. And that gets them the RBT license, it's called. So, now they're registered behavior techs underneath the BCBA. The Health and Wellness Task Force is something that Hope started before me, it was the Behavior Health Task Force, but I kind of changed the name, just because I felt, and you do, separate both Hope and I. But it's really to kind of develop faculty and staff competencies, grades K to 12 for social-emotional learning. Because this is an area need that we're seeing district-wide, whether you have autism, whether you have an intellectual disability, or whether you have a social-emotional disability. Social-emotional learning needs to be a part of your day, and needs to embed it into the general ed curriculum. Then school year 1819, teachers, general ed and special ed, undergone kind of year-long the co-teaching training that I mentioned earlier with Lisa Decker. And then, we had school psychologists previously that were going to other facilities and other areas for job-alay groups, because I think peers learn best from their peers. And so, instead, what we did here in West Bridgewater is, we started a job-alay group for school psychs and speech pathologists. So, we have a number of districts that partake in that, so they come to us. Thankfully, we have a beautiful high school that we have the space that they can come to us, and they, just really, it's a, it's time for them to kind of sit and talk, and talk about best practices and trends and what they're seeing. Because consultants are nice, however, they learn best from people that are actually in the field, actually doing the work on an everyday basis, 180 days of school year. To kind of go back to the co-teaching, you leave it there, it's fine, but to kind of go back to the co-teaching, I think what speaks volumes is, I think we're doing a good job, because we have, latest today, I just got an email today, the second one I got, that districts are looking to look at our model, and how we incorporate that model, because a lot of districts are doing the pull-out and push-in type service, and they're seeing a disconnect as well. So, there's groups that I belong to that we spoke about the model, and, again, the second one today in this urban district, Waymouth, in Waymouth Public Schools, and they're looking to observe what we're doing here, and what the work we've done with Lisa, and what we're planning to do, because they want to incorporate that within their school system. Youth Mental Health First Aid, I'm not taking any credit for this at all, but I definitely was a big supporter of it. The school psychologist over at Howard, Laura Keen, who is probably my go-to person when it comes to school psychology, kind of spearheaded this entire process, I was just there for mere support. This is something that she reached out to a family service agency, and what this is was, last year, part of her PD group was that she got about, maybe 20 to 25 educated support staff, what have you, trained in youth mental health, and what that means, and actually certified in youth mental health. It's youth mental health first aid. And it's really, if you look at it there, I'm not gonna read all of it, but it's really providing training to adults who interact with kids on a daily basis that might encounter or have some of these issues, whether it be anxiety, depression, psychosis, eating disorders. And what they do is, they possess a strong awareness of mental health challenges facing youth. Yes, we see this on an ongoing basis, but to have actually comprehensive training in this, I think staff got a lot out of it, it was maybe a two- or three-part training. And this year, like I said, it was no cost to the district, she was able to get it for no cost. And this year, the high school, I think in May and June, the entire middle school, high school, seven through 12, that's half the district, is going to be, become first mental, youth mental health first-aiders. And I think that's just, not that they get a card and they carry it with them, they say, you know, "I can do first aid on you," but they actually have the knowledge and expertise now to, to work with kids with varying issues, whether it be anxiety and depression. Because what was happening in the past is, if a kid did have anxiety or had, have depression, it was handled by the school psychologist, or handled by the guidance counselor. It shouldn't be that way. We should be able to do that as professional colleagues, highly qualified people, to, within our own classrooms, with the support, of course, with the, you know, expertise in other So, what I kind of mentioned earlier, this work wouldn't be able to be done, if it wasn't for the building principals and the business office, and what we're doing together, to make sure that we're educating that whole child. And that's what we can't forget, is that whole child, and there's a lot of dynamics that come into play, and how do we do that? So, the picture on the left is a glorious summer day, kind of administrative retreat that we did, but the, really, the conversation was, is leading like a pirate, but not only that, but how do we best support our kids? And then the picture on the right, as you know, Dr. Oakley? Okay, supplementary aids and services. This is something that I think has been brought to the district this year, but this is where students with varying communication-based disabilities and/or impairments or deficiencies students with varying communication-based disabilities and/or impairments or deficiencies need the support of devices and/or other types of software within the classroom. And we have several students that need that and need that support, but special ed teachers, they have a lot going on, right? General ed teachers have a lot going on. So how can we provide the training and the support necessary for those special ed teachers or the speech pathologists to really, to really take that to the next level when it comes to assistive tech devices? And so Jackie Egan, that I mentioned earlier from North River, she was a consultant with us to help us kind of look at, an iPad, look at various devices, and she meets with the speech pathologists on an ongoing basis to ensure that they can boost up their skills and how do we provide these types of services within the inclusive environment? Because, again, inclusive environment is not just teaching and learning, right? That's a big piece of it, but what we're doing for those kids within those environments, not just giving them worksheets, but they're communicating with us with a variety of ways, and we need to ensure that we have the consultation provided, the training provided to all professionals that are working with any student that needs that type of support. This is from, kind of, a couple pictures from our, actually, this is from last week, our co-teaching training, so you can't see Lisa because she's on a screen, so I kept that out, but that's our Roseell and Howard School teachers working in their co-teaching teams during that professional development, and there's Tim and Keith are having a really rigorous conversation there. And that's just really, I think, us going to the next level when it comes to co-teaching and how, it's nice that we can all work together, school to school and administrative to administrative, how we can build our programming. Family partnerships. This is kind of something that we do. I meet with Dr. Winchell on a monthly basis to talk, kind of, updates, trends, things that she's hearing so we can make the necessary changes. When we talk about looping, she was a big part of that, because she saw kind of an issue with that, and I did too, and so we kind of collaborated. How can we best kind of initiate this? And this is what CPAC's for. They're serving a really great purpose of being that liaison to the district and how can we make our changes that we need to make. After every team meeting, liaisons are giving family surveys, and so after a team meeting, they don't have to answer it there, but they can answer it and then send it in with the IEP, but really gives us kind of their experience of how they felt during that team meeting. Open door policy in my office, so parents know that there's always an open door, that they can always come in and speak to me whenever they have issues or concerns. District specialized staff presented at CPAC events. They, for instance, the next event, we have Jenna Duckworth, the OT, coming to speak at a CPAC event, so it's that nice collaboration there. And then, including families involved within the transition process. Okay? So I won't go through it all, but those are kind of the responsibilities of our school psychs. Again, like I said, we have three of them, but that's really, and what's really interesting, I want to emphasize, is that our school psychologists, they serve a dual role. There are adjustment counselors within our buildings, and they're also doing all the actual cognitive testing and psychological testing. And so most districts, they have school adjustment counselors, school social workers, which I kind of like the model, but, you know, they do a lot. And so they're also providing individual therapy, small groups, doing all the testing, doing individual, maybe some classroom lessons, they're, you know, on the crisis team of the district, of the school. So there's a lot that goes on, and I don't think our school psychologists stop when they walk in that door at eight o'clock or what have you, whatever time the school building begins. Special ed teachers liaisons, again, we have 13 of them within the district, and this is kind of what they're doing. You know, again, I can't put it all into bullet points because I could load it up, but they are, and I say this to them all the time, Amanda, please back me up, but I say this all the time, they really truly do so much, because not only are they responsible for the teaching and learning, but they're responsible for holding meetings, chairing annual reviews, doing all the paperwork, sending it to my office, and then really, really looking at transitions of the kids transitioning from school to school or grade to grade, and they're really the hub of that child. So, again, not only teaching and learning, but there's so much more that they're doing on an ongoing basis. There's many other districts that have team chairs, or, you know, they are the team chairs within their building, and they're the special ed experts within their building. So they, of course, again, day in, day out, it's amazing what they do. So in the district, we have two speech and language pathologists. Again, I won't go verbatim, expect all the bullet points, but we have two, primarily the servicing at the elementary level. We don't really have that need at the high school level. And then, one occupational therapist, which is, I think, a big move that we made this past year, was that we contracted with Reed's for our OT, our PT, and APE services. I'm not the biggest fan of contractual services, one, because you pay more, and two, you can't hold them accountable. And they're not really members of the team, they're part of, you know, a different, although we're part of the collaborative, and collaborative is part of us. It's different, because their paycheck is coming from the collaborative, right? So we, our highest need is speech and language when it comes to related service, then the need right below that is OT. And so we made the big decision last year to kind of cut ties with Reed's when it comes to the OT contract, and hired our own, and stole her from Amigo, and she has really good background with students with significant needs. She was at Boston Children's, and then Amigo for a number of years, she was a therapy coordinator over there. So she wanted to get into public schools, and she was the right person, and she's just doing phenomenal work, and she's here Monday through Friday, all day, very accessible to the classroom teacher, is very accessible to the special ed liaisons, she's accessible to anyone. And then we still, like I said, have continued contractual services for PT and APE through Reed's. That's something that we're going to look at on an ongoing basis, is what level of need are we at, and if we can transition that to a district staff. Because the big push, and my big push, is increasing our staff capacity within the district when it comes to special ed. So this is kind of the move towards that, to have them under our umbrella and be a member of the West Bridgewater staff. So what was nice was, the year, the summer, I think, I think she got hired at the same time as me, the BCBA, and what was nice is when I worked in my previous district, that BCBA was there when I was there, and it was the first time a BCBA was in that district, so I knew how to kind of work with that BCBA and what should be done within a public school setting and how that works, because they're pulled in a million different directions. So she has, this year, taken on direct oversight of, as you see there, the registered behavior techs, to really create this comprehensive behavioral support team. She provides that diagnostic, she provides that consultative and therapeutic purposes for the school setting, you know, there's analytical interventions that go into play here that's really science-based, that she, you know, and BCBA's undergo such an immense training. You're talking 1,500 hours of a practice that they have to undergo, so it's quite intensive. And so she oversees our enhanced staffing supports within the district, so students that need additional staff support oversees them, and, like I said, the registered behavior techs, to really create that team atmosphere. She meets with them on an ongoing basis. And really, what's great is that she's district-wide, so as we have students that transition from the Roseell to the Howard to the high school, she knows those kids, and she has seen them, you know, from year to year and school to school, or will. This is just some numbers, what we have here, the student data at the Spring Street School, so we're at right now, again, as of January 7th, 179 students, 29 students on IEPs, 16%. However, just please keep in mind that our integrated preschool program is within that building. So if that was at the high school, you would see higher numbers at the high school. Roseell, we're at 262 as of January 7th, with 23 students on IEPs for a 8.77 percentage. Howard, 287, with 39 students on IEPs for 13.58. And middle school, high school, 635, and only 43 students on IEPs for 6.77. And that's a trend you should really see, especially when they get to middle school, high school, is that the purpose of an IEP is not to stay on there forever. The purpose of an IEP is to work towards independence and work towards being successful at that. So that's the whole purpose of it, but I think, again, we do a good job. Our numbers right now are at 10.6, the state average is 17.7. You know, we're just about half the state average, and it's not because we're West Bridgewater, it doesn't because we have enough need as other districts. You know, we're comparable to our size, right? You know, when you go to Brockton, yeah, they might have 3,000 students in special ed, however, it's, they have, you know, the high school, the biggest high school in the state, you know? So it's comparable to kind of what we have as numbers, and I'm happy with our numbers, it's just the IED district, we got to get a little lower. Okay, two pieces of information, Dr. Oakley just went over the North River Collaborative, but they primarily do our special ed transportation, out-of-district transportation, and kind of what Dr. Oakley talked about before, about reimbursement through Circuit Breaker, just so you guys are aware. We have to provide transportation for students that are going out of district, it's not a choice, and so we don't get reimbursed for that. So a kid untransported, we have one student that receives transportation that is about $75,000 for the entire year. We receive zero back for that. We receive reimbursement based on the tuition that we're paying, however, the transportation, we're not getting anything back for that. So there's a number of students that we have that cost anywhere between 25 to, like I said, $75,000 to transport that student for 180 days of school year. They provide some really good low-cost or no-cost professional development for students that we have to send to the collaborative, because we're a member district, we get the member rate. They also have a learning center program here at the middle school, high school, and then what they offer that I love is the social work intern program. So these are students that are in the first and second year of graduate school for school social work, and we have one in each building this year, and days will change, but this year with our need, Spring Street has a two-day intern, Roseell has a two-day intern, Howard has a three-day, and the high school has a three-day. And the reason being is that that's where we saw the most need of, the most support that students need, was at the Howard and at the high school. So they have the three days, and, you know, it's hit or miss sometimes because they're interns, but I think the interns that we get at a very low cost is really cost-effective for us, because they're providing really good support, and the four of them together cost less than a full-time adjustment counselor. Reed's Collaborative, they, again, provide professional development opportunities. We use them primarily for the diagnostic clinic. They have a fantastic clinic there that provides really good comprehensive evaluations when needed. We also get the member rate, because that's another member collaborative, and then they also have the nine-through-12 therapeutic program located here at the middle school, high school. And they're kind of looking ahead, because that's all we have to do every year, is look at what we've done this year and how can we make it better. So it's continued the staff's capacity through ongoing specialized training and professional development. I've always said this from the beginning, is that I'm not a fan of the one-and-done PD, it's more the ongoing year, two-year, three-year PD endeavors. Sometimes my PD schedules mess up everything else, and I get that, it's the second year I've done that. However, it's really good PD. To advance our student support systems and programming, to provide first-rate services for students that are in most need, and that's what my drive is, and that's what every principal here wants to do, is provide the best rate, or the best really first-rate education for the children in their building. And then build their skill and knowledge in the special ed department, and proactively plan for the success of our students, and really make programmatic changes based on what we're seeing for trends, so when kids are ready and transitioning from building to building, or we get kids that are moving in, which we've had, that have significant need, we need to ensure that we're not just being reactive and say, "Okay, this kid moved in, what are we going to do now?" It's more, okay, this is what we have in place, we have the right systems and supports in place, people can move in all day, that's fine, you don't have to, but... And then, what they're really doing at the high school, which I love, is the seven-through-12 liaisons specifically focusing on transition planning, and that was an area that we have needed to improve on. That was something mentioned by our state review when we had the mid-cycle review this year, and when we had our last six-year review, was that we need to do better when it comes to transition planning services for our students at the middle school, high school level, 14-plus. And it's not that we weren't doing anything, it's that we just need to do better of what we're doing. And that's a number of activities that we can do, that's really utilizing district staff, utilizing maybe the guidance department with our special ed teachers, looking at a college option for students with disabilities, looking at employment, looking at independent living, those types of things, because I think, or I know, that students require that in order to make a successful post-secondary endeavor in their life. And so when they have the right supports when they're here, and they have the same right as any other kid, any other general ed student, to receive the same guidance support, the same support to transition, to set up for success when they leave here. And that's an area that I think that liaisons are doing fantastic work with, and they're working together, the four of them, and what they're doing is they're creating a coordinated set of activities that will follow the student when they turn 14 on until they graduate high school, whether it be applications that they filled out, or permit, you know, application they have to fill. But there's a number of things that they're doing within the district here that we can do, that the teachers are doing, now doing transition assessments. We haven't done that before. And now, teachers are required during reevaluations to do transition-based assessments to measure what we need to work on for that kid. So that's something that, you know, I really appreciate the administrative support at the high school, that now they're using their PD time very effectively, and I just talked to one of them today, and they said, "This, I'm getting so much out of this," because they have a consultant that's sitting down with the four of them, just working on transition planning, which is fantastic, so... And that's all I have for you tonight. Okay? Oh, I lied. And this is kind of what we want to get to, is every student deserves the right to have a high school diploma, and that's what we want to get at. And so this is just a picture from last year, it was actually my first, obviously, West Bridgewater graduation, it was beautiful at that park, it was amazing, and I really feel, you know, the Eleanor Roosevelt quote here, "The future belongs to those who believe in the beauty of their dreams," and every kid has a dream, disability or not, it is our job to ensure that we prepare them for post-secondary success. Good? All right? You're welcome, you're welcome, thank you.
Nice job.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, on to business. 2019, 2020, school choice vote.
I would like to make a motion not to vote on school choice, because we are a school choice district, and we do not need to vote on it, we just want to remain a school choice district, so if we could just make a motion to stay?
Stay.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Inclusion Matters, Mrs. Hume.
On Tuesday, February 26th, at 6:00 PM, our district's OT, Jenna Duckworth, will speak about the value of play for all ages of students and not just forcing around the power of play, and that will be right here in the High Schools Learning Commons. And a yoga class for children with special needs is being offered by an organization called Balance Kids. It's going to be held at the West Bridge Bar to Public Library on Saturdays, starting on July, excuse me, January 16th, and running through February 9th. And more information and a link to register can be found on the Inclusion Matters Facebook page. Done?
All right. Thank you very much. Policies, policy 7,500, school use...
Property use.
Property use, thank you, Mr. Holden, because we've got a lot of discussion about it.
I think we've killed it.
Yeah, we're going to leave the policy as is, we're not going to make any changes. Mr. Holden did speak briefly with Mrs. Hamel. As of right now, we don't want to, you know, increase any fees, we don't want to make any changes to it, and we will revisit this again, probably in the fall, to see if, what other school districts use for, you know, gym time, auditoriums and whatnot, but I don't think we're going to make any changes at this point. Maybe we'll wait till next year, see what next year brings us. So I'd like to make a motion to just leave the policy as is.
Moved.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I was nervous. I thought we were going to hit the bus even more.
That was an intentional delay.
Thank you, everybody. I'll remember that.
Policy 8, 8,200, animals in the classroom. Mrs. Hume.
Yes, that is mine, and if you recall, that's one that we're just adding therapy dogs to, and Mr. Michael Asik and I have met. It's almost done, we're going to meet again next week on Wednesdays just to finalize it, so we'll, I'll have that for you next month.
Perfect, thank you very much.
You just want to meet with me again.
I do, yes, that's the thing.
How many therapy dogs do we have? I know one.
One and a half.
Yeah, we have one and a half.
I don't want to say a half dog.
Where'd the half come from?
She doesn't...
I know the one.
No, no, you know the half, I think.
Golden doodle? Actually, she's not a golden, she's a, she's something else, but she is a doodle.
You know Finn.
I know Finn, yeah. Finn's a great...
We have Alman.
Finn's the half.
Finn's a great dog.
Great dog, I agree.
And he or she goes to very many schools.
He does?
Yeah. We have Alman.
And Alman, yeah.
Yeah. Finn and my dog don't see eye to eye, though, there's no love there at all. They ignore each other, they play, but they ignore each other. I don't get it, they're both doodles.
Warrant subcommittee report, Mrs. Sullivan.
Yes. The following warrants were issued and paid.
Uh, the bill warrants, there were five of them, dated December twentieth, two thousand eighteen, in the amount of fifty-one thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine dollars and eighty cents. December twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen, in the amount for eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars and twenty cents. January third, two thousand nineteen, in the amount of ten thousand, seventy-nine dollars and thirty cents. Dated, uh, the next is January tenth, two thousand nineteen, in the amount of sixty thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars and forty-one cents. And then the last bill warrant that I had reviewed was dated January seventeenth, two thousand nineteen, in the amount of sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four dollars and seventy-two cents. There were two payroll, payroll warrants dated December twenty-eighth, two thousand eighteen, in the amount of four hundred and eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and four dollars and thirty-eight cents. And then the second was dated January eleventh, two thousand nineteen, in the amount of four hundred and fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine dollars and seventy-eight cents. And for all of those bill warrants, I did review the backup information provided by our business office. And as always, all warrants are public record and once signed are available in the selectmen's office for review.
Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan.
Thank you.
Public forum, members of the audience wishing to address the committee may do so at this time. Audience members are reminded that personnel issues or issues that would violate student confidentiality cannot be addressed during the public forum. Um, we would like to, uh, welcome, we do have Senator Timothy with us tonight, we'd like to welcome him up to actually have a good night here for our, uh, budget reform and also, uh, our, um, uh, what else do we have there? School choice and, uh, special education reform. Senator Timothy, thank you very much for coming down tonight.
Thank you very much for having me. I greatly appreciate this opportunity from the school committee, thank you very much, Dr. Oakley. Uh, it's a privilege to be here. This is actually my first opportunity to address this august body since I attended your graduation last June. And I must say, that was an incredibly special ceremony. And if invited, I'll be back again, come next June, so thank you very much. It was thoroughly enjoyable and I believe a great tribute to this great town. Uh, first of all, uh, many of you, and I hope all, have received communications from myself in the past couple of days, mentioning bill filing. In the legislature, we have bill filing, which will wrap up on January eighteenth. So any suggestions, uh, ideas, please forward them to me, I will, uh, embrace them and incorporate them into the legislative proposals that I will be filing. I'm actually remiss, my legislative director is here with me tonight, Lauren Cincella. So Lauren deals with every issue that pertains to the ten towns that I represent in the Norfolk Bristol and Plymouth district. And, uh, we work together, we work as a team. We have a great office and, uh, obviously we will never forget that we work for the people of the town. So thank you very much. Uh, now, of course, the topic of the night, the foundation, which obviously, uh, I had the privilege of serving in the state, the House of Reps, representing Randolph and Milton, and now, uh, in the state senate, I represent West Bridgewater, East Bridgewater, Eastern, Canton, Stoughton, Sharon, Avon, Braintree, uh, Milton and Randolph. Throughout my history of serving the legislature, the, uh, Educational Reform Act, which was done in nineteen ninety-three, and by the way, Dr. Oakley, you were right on the money with your assessments of it, it has been outdated throughout my tenure. Uh, throughout my time, both in the house and the senate, I have co-sponsored numerous initiatives to change the formula. Because for quite some time, it not only has been outdated, but it's also been ineffective. Because obviously money, uh, in many ways makes the world go round. And the resources that are allocated to towns like West Bridgewater or towns like Milton, or for instance, towns like Ashland, which our senate president, senate president Spilker hails from, the formula just doesn't address the needs and challenges of school committees and school departments like the school system that you run so well here. And it is awfully nice, by the way, principal to be, to be here in the home of the West Bridgewater Wildcats. Uh, based on my, uh, first attendance of a football game here two years ago, I still have the T-shirt, which I bought over there at the concession stand when I went with Bill and Julie Flynn. Uh, with that, the senate president Spilker, when we were sworn in on January second, said her top priority was to address the foundation budget review in this term. We operate in two-year sessions, we embarked upon the latest two-year session on January second. Uh, so we have two years now. And senate president Spilker, this is her first complete term of being our senate president. I have high hopes for senate president Spilker, she's a, uh, immensely talented woman who is absolutely dedicated to the children of the Commonwealth. She, uh, became a, a figure in public life, uh, based on the fact that Ashland was being short-changed by the foundation budget and the formula. And ran for the school committee back in the nineties, ran for state rep successfully in two thousand and one and became a state senator in two thousand and seven. So I will be partnering up with the senate president and many of my colleagues to affect change here. And I understand that you folks are on the front lines of educating the children here on the Commonwealth. You can't do this on your own. You need a partner, obviously, in state government. Uh, I would submit to you that I am your partner, uh, and Rep Dubois over in the house, we are committed to finding every available dollar for the school systems we represent. Now, in the absence of change, and obviously we've been trying to affect change for many years, we, you need a majority, or in this case, two-thirds, to change the formula. And, uh, those efforts have been thwarted, but what we can do in the interim, and I've tried to do every step of the way in my career, is to find every available dollar for the school systems that I represent.[1602.91]